We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Today's date is May the 15th, 2023, and this is the Tel City Common Council Special Meeting. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you all. Next item is adoption of the agenda. We are going to move up under new business, item A, the Clarity Audiology Listen Up LLC tax abatement request. We're going to move up to just under comments of citizens. So, item A, under new business, moving up to under comments of citizens. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Other than that, if there are none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is under comments of citizens. If there are any citizens that would like to make any comments on anything that's not on the agenda, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the minutes, please. All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the Clarity Audio- Audiology Listen Up LLC tax payment. We have Kevin Wanniger here to kind of present that to you all. Do you want me to start first with the video, or what do you want me to start first with? You just tell me when. If you'd come up to the microphone, we'd appreciate that. You all should have a copy of his request in here, as well as maybe some... Well, the SB one, yeah. As well as some black and white renderings. And for those of you who do not know, this is Kevin Wanniger. He's got a great... He and his daughter have a great opportunity here for Tel City, something we don't have. And I'm going to let him tell all about it now.
First of all, I want to thank everyone for taking time to listen to me this evening and everything I request. Again, my name is Kevin Wanniger, and you're representing Listen Up LLC as well as Clarity Audiology. And as you know by now, we are requesting a tax abatement on the property that we own at 1005 Main Street. And our plan is to build a medical facility to house a full-time doctor of audiology. To our knowledge, there's never been a resident audiologist in Tel City. And we feel like this would be an outstanding service to help for this community. So, before I discuss the plan with the development of the property, if you wouldn't mind referring us and watching the video.
Not at all.
And this is a message from the doctor that's planning to be there.
Okay.
A little bit, yes.
All right. We got it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear the sound of your own voice?
Yeah.
I'm starting to think you so much, I'm so excited. Thanksgiving's on your face, and I can call you on your cellphone now, baby. And then you were talking to my dad, and my sister.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Are you okay? Is that too loud?
No, not too loud. The voice is annoying, you don't hear that? I have to even forever?
I just love that video. It makes me laugh every time I see it. Hi, Tel Cityans. I'm sorry I couldn't be there with you today to chat in person, but I'm hoping that the following video will be an effective substitute for that. My name is Klein Wanniger, and I am a doctor of audiology, much like the doctor that you saw in that video. In short, audiology is the practice of diagnosing and treating hearing imbalance disorders. I just began my fourth professional year in this field, and I cannot tell you how much I love my job. I get to experience situations like that video every single day, and it has brought so much fulfillment to my life. The field of audiology is such a benefit to any community, for people of all ages, and I'm really hoping that I can show that to you today throughout today's video. Over the past four years, I've had the opportunity to travel the country and experience a variety of different clinical settings. I've seen balance institutes, VA networks, hospital systems, and even private practices. Each of these different settings have provided me with a unique set of skills, but they've also presented a unique set of challenges. And at the expense of sounding negative, I have tended to focus more on those challenges. I'm often in situations where I think to myself, you know, that could have been handled more efficiently, or wow, we should probably do that differently, or even, oh my goodness, that should not have happened at all. Frankly, I feel like I can do those things better. After having seen those situations, I feel like I have an understanding on how they can be prevented, and I want to do that better. Clarity Audiology was born because we can do it better. I want to provide an environment for the hearing impaired to come in and get the best possible care without having to sacrifice their comfort. I've thought a lot over the last few months about where I might want to make this happen. Where can I give the best possible care to a community? And at the end of the day, there is no better community to serve than the Perry County community. Tel City is my home. I was born here. I was raised here. You know, my family is here. I love Tel City, and there is no better community to provide this care to than the community that made me who I am today. Perry County has never had an audiologist in the community to serve their hearing healthcare needs, and I can almost guarantee that it's a needed service. There's an estimated 28.8 million adults in America today that could benefit from amplification services, but only 30% of those people are getting the help that they need. The two biggest barriers to getting the help that they need are accessibility and affordability. Accessibility alone can be resolved just by having a clinic in the Perry County community. The closest clinics right now are Jasper and Owensboro, and nobody wants to drive 45 minutes to an hour to see a medical professional. They would much rather hop in the car and be there in five minutes, and having someone in Tel City will help them to come over that barrier. Affordability is another issue. As we all know, hearing aids are very expensive, and there is no getting around that. A hearing aid has to be durable enough to survive in one of the most hostile environments in the human body, and it has to do that for 12 hours a day for five to seven years. That's more use than the average cellphone is getting these days, which is a huge amount. So, the hearing aids are going to need to be expensive so that they can survive for a long period of time. So, we have a few ideas on how we might be able to help to ease the financial burden of hearing aids for as many people as we can. One of those ways is by partnering both with the VA network and with Medicaid insurance. These are two policies that not a lot of audiology clinics work with, so oftentimes people will have to travel even further in order to find a provider that will accept one of these insurances. By working with those right here in Perry County, we will be able to reach an even broader spectrum of patients and hopefully help as many people as we can. Another way that we hopefully help to ease that burden on our patients is by what we call an unbundled model of hearing aids. Typically, when you purchase hearing aids from an audiologist, the hearing aids and then all follow-up services are all bundled under one cost. That can create a pretty heavy financial investment for a lot of people. Those hearing aids typically run for anywhere from $6,000 to $7,000. By unbundling these services, the patient is just paying for the hearing aids, and then they pay for the services that they need over time as they need them.
I don't know why it froze up. Give it a second. Maybe it'll load. Well, it was going well, wasn't it? Well, it's loading again. Before it does... Any questions so far? Kevin, do you have anything you want to add to it?
Not yet.
Yeah, okay. Let's see what's going on here. Like 10 seconds ahead.
It's at your internet connection.
And see what happens when you hit play there. And Circle of Death, yeah. Looks like it's still accessing the internet. I don't know what the world is... Give it just a moment. It's not me, I'm not stealing your Wi-Fi signal. I've got too much Wi-Fi on. I'm going to hit back. Try it again.
Adjustment.
...for as many people as we can. One of those ways is by partnering both with the VA network and with Medicaid insurance. We can. Another way that we hopefully help to ease that burden on our patients is by what we call an unbundled model of hearing aids. Typically, when you purchase hearing aids from an audiologist, the hearing aids and then all follow-up services are all bundled under one cost. That can create a pretty heavy financial investment for a lot of people. Those hearing aids typically run for anywhere from $6,000 to $7,000. By unbundling these services, the patient is just paying for the hearing aids, and then they pay for the services that they need over time as they need them. This will create the hearing aids to be a much smaller cost to the patient. They will only run from about $4,000 to $5,000 instead, and then as the patient needs us, they call us and let us know. They will never be paying for services that they will never use. The cool thing about audiology is that it is so much more than just hearing tests and hearing aids. There are a multitude of services that Clarity Audiology will be able to provide for the community. Those services range from hearing conservation and protection to tinnitus evaluations, to earwax removal, and swim plugs. There are several different things that we will be able to offer the community that will help them in their everyday life. Eventually, likely in the next 10 to 15 years, we would also like to dive into the balance and dizziness realm. That's what I focused my residency on when I was in graduate school, and it, to this day, remains my biggest passion within audiology. So, I'm hoping that down the line, within the next 10 to 15 years, this is another service that we will be able to offer the community. We have really big plans for Clarity Audiology, and when we thrive, the community will thrive as well. We ask each of you to consider granting our LLC, Listen Up, a tax abatement. Starting a business is expensive, and we will accrue all of those typical costs: furniture, inventory, computers, phones, everything else that you could think of that a new business needs. Our building will be an expense as well. We have beautiful remodel plans, and it will be a wonderful asset to our main street. Because we have a triple net lease on that building with an option to purchase down the road, we will be responsible for those property taxes, and a tax abatement will directly impact our bottom line. Opening an audiology practice specifically adds a whole new layer to that financial onion. The diagnostic equipment that we need to provide the best possible and most well-rounded care to our community is an especially large investment, especially for a young professional like myself. Every financial burden that can be lifted from Listen Up LLC and Clarity Audiology will help to ensure that the practice will survive. And when we survive, the residents of Perry County will have access to quality hearing healthcare right in their own backyard. I thank you all for your time today, and I thank you for your consideration, and I really look forward to coming home and serving our community. Take care.
All right. Glad we got that working.
So, as I'm sure you gather, that Dr. Wanniger is my daughter, and I can tell you that the mother and I are thrilled that she's chosen Tel City and is the home for her new practice to move back to Tel City. And we're spending about five years now in California and presently in Wyoming practicing. And, you know, as you all know, so many of our youth, after they leave here and go to school, many of them don't return. And we have someone here that wants to be here, wants to return to the community she grew up in, and so we're just trying to make this as viable for her as we possibly can. So, what I'd like to do is share with you some of the changes we have in store for that property. I don't... I think they said you have some photos there.
Do you want the exterior rendering first, or do you want the floor plan first?
It doesn't matter. We can do the exterior if you like.
Okay. Gary, if you can't... Or John, if you can't see, you're welcome to look at this laptop, too. And you should have a small patch.
So, the building that's there, this location right now, was recently promoted in Perry County. As a matter of fact, I practice, I have my financial planning practice in that building. That building dates back, I don't even really know how far. I do know that some of you may remember Mayor Dryling having the Dryling Insurance Agency there. And Bill Dryling was there, and I, for years, until 99. So, the building has served its purpose well. But what many people don't know is before it was the Dryling Insurance Agency, it was actually a car wash. And so, the concrete pad that it was built on, it actually slopes. And so, if you look at it, it slows down from Main Street toward the alley about six inches from front to back. So, when you walk into that building, the ceiling height is only about 7'4". And by the time you get to the back of the building, it's about 7'10". Our original intent was to remodel it as it is and make that work. However, after much consideration, we determined that, number one, it was probably a little too small. It's just under 1,000 square feet currently. And we were going to have to, in order to raise the ceiling height, we were going to have to completely remove all the ceiling trusses. The whole roof comes off. In order to make it a little larger, we were going to blow the whole... What would that be? South side of the building out to widen it. And just ultimately, we've determined that the best course of action is to just completely raise the building and start with a brand-new structure. And we had Universal Design draw our plans up for us. It'll be a 1,300-square-foot building when we're finished. I think it's quite attractive, and I think it'll be a great addition to our downtown as we try to continue to revitalize the downtown area. And, you know, so many businesses have moved off of Main Street. We want this to serve as an example of what Main Street can be in this community. We don't want to lose Main Street. So, you can...
Want to see the floor plan?
Yeah, so... Let's see what way that is. Yeah, that's... That would be...
Main Street would be... The front doors, you've got the little door open out on the right.
The front doors on the right-hand side of the building there. There would be a reception and waiting area there to the right of the door, with an office to the left. And then as you go to the back, the evaluation room on the left, where she'll have her hearing booth in there, where she'll do hearing tests. And then she'll have another workroom. It's labeled office, but that'll be another workroom. And then a kitchenette, bathroom, and a utility room there. So, again, we think it'll be a beautiful addition to Main Street, and, you know, we're really excited to play a part in bringing this much needed, we believe, medical service to Tel City. And what we'd like to do, again, is just have a building that we feel we'd be proud of, and hopefully spark additional co-operation. So, we respectfully ask for a maintenance. If you can be in it, as Dr. Wanniger noted, she is going to be responsible for these expenses of that building. The estimate cost to build that building at this point is about $400,000. And that does not count any of her equipment or anything on the inside. That's the building alone. So, it's quite my investment, and she will be responsible for those taxes. So, anything we can help regret that thing of building initially that we're on, we greatly appreciate. So, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
I'll let you guys start.
I've got a few. First of all, thank you. Great opportunity, really, and I appreciate you being here. You're involved.
Thank you.
And we wish you the best of all, and be successful in this project. I've got just a couple of questions. One is, will we be parking in the back of the building?
The only parking that will be back there are for employees. So, most likely, she would have her office at any point in time as far as patients. Likely, have two cars. You know, she's a receptioner, so she'll see one patient, and then likely, possibly one waiting to come in. So, I would ask if we make it properly, just to be clear.
And did that possess a rule?
Yeah, we can add that to the...
We have to park on the street, and I have to go to the corner to get on the sidewalk.
There, I believe there is a corner ADA compatible on the corner.
Should be, since they just renewed.
There is. There's a handicap ramp on the corner. Our front... Their next-door neighbor would be Logos. There's a handicap ramp there. 75 feet down, maybe. Maybe not even that. Yeah, that outside edge.
The tax abatement, how much, how long, were you requesting?
Well, I believe for what's going to be involved for her to get started, I think trying to release the standard in terms of where we start with, and what we, of course, would see would be... I think it's usually like 100% in 97, 60 over a 10-year window. And, you know, we have a $400,000 building. Those property taxes would be pretty high, and understanding that, definitely get for a layup.
So, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but you're requesting the maximum amount?
Yes.
I know some of the farm that you built out, Kevin. Or some of the... The best value of the current property?
Yes.
Was it $2,400?
Yes.
Is that the building? That's just the land?
No, that's the building.
True.
Yes. That does not include the land.
Okay, okay.
Does it seem like the way that's worked is it's in a maintenance on the structure? Only is my understanding, and so I totally included the value that I think I don't know the tax.
Okay, okay. Such an old building. And my... What I think is, I think this would be a great service to the community. I can see a tying in with, at least with Jamie's family. Tell me your speech.
Kevin, I had that discussion.
Yeah, we did. So, it's funny because my daughter, she actually babysat for the hand.
Oh, she was in high school.
And in fact, Jamie is, I guess I'll say kind of a mentor to her. Probably played a little bit of a role of her going into speech and hearing. And then at that point, after your undergraduate degree, you make a decision. You want to be speech or hearing. Only about 10% of the people actually go to the hearing side of that equation, and that's what she decided she wanted to do. And we've actually considered whether it would make sense to talk to Jamie about possibly doing a structure together and having one building with both services. You know, I know she has her building there, and we were able to acquire this property. I just don't think the property lends itself to that large of a privacy. It's kind of confusing already.
But it's nice, the both services would be useful in town. And we're hoping with...
I actually spoke with the mayor about the building there on the corner of the right next to Jamie. And so, it didn't work out. So, we're thrilled. We're thrilled to have the right next to this, and I know those two are more close to each other.
Thank you. Question, Kevin. Does our local school system work with an audiologist right now? Or is that a possibility for her to also work with our school system?
Yeah, I know she likes to try that. Much industry in the area as well. They bring mobile hearing booths in, and do hearing tests for employees. She'd like to offer those services to industry in the area, schools, potentially. Do sound evaluations in the factories so they can determine if it is hearing protection necessary where it's necessary, where it's applicable to time. So, she's planning to do that.
There's multiple areas where she can benefit our community.
Yes.
John, Julie, do you have any questions?
No, it sounds great. I'm glad to hear getting in with the veterans and things like that. I know we have a lot of veterans in the community, and they have to travel far and wide to get medical help, and that would be very...
That's pretty good for her because she did it in this time in Southern California, working for the VA Hospital. And she struggled with leaving that, I can tell you, because, number one, she loved working with veterans. And the issue she ran into was with the lockdowns that were going on, the cost of living in Southern California. It just became difficult for her. And she just decided that maybe this was the time to go away with private practice. Because she knew that's what she wanted to do eventually. And so, now she's running a practice for another audiologist in Wyoming. And she feels like she's ready to give it a go. I know one of the things she wanted to make sure of was that she is able to work with that veteran and take that veteran out of that insurance. How that works, she has to think about that.
Well, you're in luck, Kevin. The veterans officer's sitting right out there in the middle of the room. All right. Well, council, you've heard Kevin's presentation and saw from Klein as well. I think this is a great opportunity for Tel City, something we don't have here, to offer not only to our residents but surrounding communities. Especially if she gets into the balance aspect of it, it will draw people to Perry County. Somebody young wanting to move back here? That's great. It checks the box for being a lot of great things. Sure?
So, when she was earning her degree, you have to seek out what I call an externship, or what we think of as a residency. And so, she, on her own, decided from IU, she graduated both undergrad and graduate school at IU. She sought out an externship in California, and she was able to secure one there with a large practice in Newport Beach. And that practice, as she mentioned, really focused on balance issues. And they... That practice actually had, they had two, I believe, pieces of diagnostics equipment, of which there are only 10 in the world. And she was able to work in that environment. In fact, if you may know who more more human it is, the owner of the Dallas Mavericks, he was one of their patients at that facility. And so, she gained some real good experience at that environment as well. And she said that's... Hopefully, she should bring some of that as well.
That's fantastic. I'd love to hear all that. Jeff, what is the process that the council needs to go through as far as any motions or intent?
The final approval would not be tonight. I think the best way to characterize this is that they would need to approve moving forward, because there will have to be a hearing. We've got to publish a notice, schedule a public hearing. So, I think... So I think that would be the step tonight would be for the council to, if, if such a motion were made, to, to approve moving forward with the process. I think they could also, I, I would suggest that you have a discussion and move forward with a, firm up what, you know, he had mentioned a ten years sliding scale, ten year. If the council is comfortable with that, then we know what we will have to publish. But I think that would be your next step right now is just a motion to proceed.
I'll make a motion to proceed and with the same guidelines that you mentioned with the abatement.
The ten year abatement.
Ten years and it gradually decreases.
Ten percent.
Hundred, yeah, yeah. Okay. Is there a motion on that?
Second.
Second by Gary. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, so we'll work on the next.
First step down moving forward.
What's your, what's your timeframe? I don't know if anybody asked that. When, when does, when would she love to?
July first, let's start construction.
Yeah. Let's, I know, we're getting on the advertising and stuff, it's going to be, get it?
We have enough time to get all of that done prior to, to beginning construction.
Think so? Okay, well, good.
I have the dates written down. I think we have that published in just the next few days. I have, I have a record at the office, but making sure that happens. I do want to mention also, first of all, I want to thank you all so much.
Means a lot.
Means a lot to me and so much to her, but I think it means a lot to the community and I appreciate your thought on this. Also, I want to mention when I mentioned Mark Higgin's name, that's not bringing in confidence. He actually was so impressed with that, with that practice that he actually endorses it up early.
Yeah, no, he has, yeah. No, I figured you knew that.
He's prob, he's bound to have loved that they had an IU grad in there. Mark's a big IU guy.
All right. Thank you.
Kevin, just a side note, you may want to check with the newspaper because there are times to advertise things. Just in the last two weeks has changed again.
It's a moving target.
So check with them for sure when you have to have something there. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item, starting under Oates Business now, is the ordinance on the yield sign. Jeff has this. I don't know if counsel is entirely familiar with the update on the situation. We had a concerned resident come to us that there was no stopper yield sign in the area where there was kind of corner and basically intersection there. And Chief Nau looked at it and he is correct, there is no markings there. So we felt the yield sign would satisfy it and that was the recommendation by him and endorsed by the chief. So we do have to do that through.
Board of Works did approve it.
Board of Works did give a favorable recommendation.
Yep.
So it's much like a stop sign, we install those, they have to be done through an ordinance. So this has to be, once it's approved, it gets advertised and then it will be placed up. So any questions on this yield sign? Does everybody understand where the location is? It's in Gary's ward. Actually, it's just right in the corner from your house.
Half a block from my home there and I think it's certainly needed there because particularly the traffic on Fourteenth Street comes in here, they're not very observant there at that corner.
Well.
And they're, they're probably going at least a good thirty miles per hour usually.
They, they could be. So is there, and this would be ordinance twelve oh one, for your records, if anybody wants to write at the top, is there a motion for the first reading of ordinance number twelve oh one?
Motion.
Motion made by Julie, second by Gary.
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. First reading.
Ordinance number twelve oh one, amendment to traffic section of the code of TELCITY. Whereas there have been certain changes in, in conditions regarding traffic in a certain area of the city of TELCITY and the code of TELCITY should be amended to reflect those changes. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of TELCITY, Indiana as follows. Section one, section fourteen dash one twelve of the code of TELCITY shall be amended to read as follows. A yield sign shall be placed on Steuben Street for traffic on the west side of Fourteenth Street at the intersection of Steuben Street and Fourteenth Street in the city of TELCITY. Section two, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the common council of the city of TELCITY, approval by the mayor and publication in accordance with Indiana law, passed and adopted by the common council of the city of TELCITY, Indiana this fifteenth day of May, 2023.
Okay, council, you've had ordinance number twelve oh one for its first reading. I'm here to motion to suspend rules for second, third reading by title only.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Gary, is there a second? Second by Julie, for discussion. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Second, third reading of twelve oh one, but we're, title please, Jeff.
Ordinance number twelve oh one, amendment to traffic section of the code of TELCITY. Third reading, ordinance number twelve oh one, amendment to traffic section of the code of TELCITY.
Okay, council, you've had first, second, third reading of ordinance number twelve oh one, is there a motion to adopt?
Oh, my gosh.
Motion made by Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, under Oates Business, item B, ordinance for mobile food vendors.
I had originally sent out a copy of this. Mayor Connie and Steve Goodson and I met Friday to go over it again. Edits were made, that copy was sent out to everybody later on Friday. This is now that most recent version after we kind of streamlined it, changed some of the language. The prior language would have in essence created a department. We did not, our intention was never to create a department, so we kind of simplified it to make it clear that we weren't doing that. So.
So is there any questions on this ordinance?
I noticed you also changed the fee structure.
Yes.
Thank you. I think that was a good change.
Yes, yes. And the, I can tell you that the logic behind that is if you break it out into a monthly fee, the two hundred and forty-one year is the cheapest. But if somebody wants to do a shorter term, they're going to pay in essence twice what they paid for, for an entire year on a per month basis. And the six months splits, splits that in the middle and kind of turns it into the equivalent of thirty dollars per month. So it's structured at one month, they can apply for, for forty dollars. Six months would be thirty dollars a month or a hundred and eighty. Twelve months, two hundred and forty dollars, equivalent of twenty dollars a month.
So counsel, does everybody understand the intention of this ordinance? It's not to ban food trucks, it's to protect the taxpayers that are businesses that are in our community, employ people here, to protect our jobs and, and their taxpayers. So just want to make sure I understand, it's not a ban at all. Actually, researching this, there's a lot of communities actually have the same type of ordinance for those particular reasons than others. So is there any questions before I have him read it entirely?
Does it go, I can't remember reading it. Does it go for the board of public works initially? Is that like the first thing that they would do?
If they're going to be on city property, yes. They would have to get a board of works approval.
Yeah. They would go to the clerk treasurer's just to purchase their license. They have all the various requirements in here that, what, what they have to do to qualify for the license. So the clerk treasurer would be able to issue a license. Now, if they want to go on city property, they also have to go to the board of works and get permission to do that. Private property, they just have to prove with a letter from the private property owner they have permission to be on the private property.
Yeah.
But then they also have to contact the health department?
They've always had to.
Yeah, anybody that's going to serve food is going to have to do health department. The only exemptions I'm aware of that, that would impact anybody in Perry County is the farmer's market.
Nope, that's impacted by the health department as well.
Health department, actually. So I stand corrected.
I believe they would, they can, they make sure they serve, we won't get that, that's another.
Yeah, I could go into the, stay out of the tall weeds, thank you.
Yes, and I hope that the second, third reading is by title. If not, we're going to be here until midnight, y'all. All right. So is there a motion for first reading of ordinance number, this would be twelve oh two? Motion made by Julie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jeff, good luck.
Lord help me. Ordinance number twelve oh two, an ordinance permitting and regulating mobile food vendors in the city of TELCITY, Indiana. Whereas there is a growing interest in food trucks, food concession carts and other forms of mobile food sales. And whereas it is the intent of the common council of the city of TELCITY, Indiana, to encourage mobile food vendors who attract residents and tourists and who add to the vibrancy of the city of TELCITY, Indiana, and while providing a framework under which such businesses operate. Whereas the current municipal code of the city of TELCITY does not address the regulation of mobile food vending. Whereas it is appropriate to establish reasonable regulations to govern mobile food vending in the city in an effort to provide reasonable opportunities for mobile food vendors to operate within the city. Whereas the common council finds that such regulations are needed in order to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the city of TELCITY, Indiana and the citizens inhabitants and inhabitants thereof. Now therefore be it ordained by the common council of the city of TELCITY, Indiana as follows. Section one, there is hereby added to the code of ordinances of the city of TELCITY, Indiana, chapter one seventeen, the language of which shall be as follows. Chapter one seventeen, mobile food vendors. Section two, one seventeen oh one, purpose of chapter. The purpose of this chapter is to regulate the activities of individuals, firms or corporations engaging in the practice of mobile food sales to sustain a safe and consistent standard of operation and to promote public health, safety and welfare of the city of TELCITY, Indiana and the citizens and inhabitants thereof. Section three, one seventeen oh two, definitions. For the purpose of this chapter, the following terms, phrases, words and abbreviations shall have the meaning given herein. When not inconsistent with the context, words used in the present tense include future tense, words in plural number include the singular number, and words in the singular number include the plural number. Number one, board shall refer to the board of publics and, the board of public works and safety of the city of TELCITY, Indiana. Number two, city shall refer to the city of TELCITY, Indiana.
We're going to have round robin reading here. I'm telling you, everybody's going to get a page.
Number three, director shall refer to the appropriate personnel determined by officials of the city of TELCITY, Indiana. Number four, food shall mean any raw, cooked or processed edible substance, ice, beverage, drink or ingredient used or intended for the use or for sale in whole or in part for human consumption. Number five, food caterer shall refer to a person or company hired and paid to provide and serve food, usually for a large group and at a location separate from where the food is prepared. A food caterer does not include someone preparing and selling food to individuals. Number six, food vending push cart shall mean any box or container with wheels that is not propelled or moved by an engine and was designed and manufactured specifically for the purpose of selling food. Number seven, mobile food vehicle shall mean a self-contained food establishment that is on wheels, self-propelled or moved by an engine, weighs no more than sixteen thousand pounds and for which the primary purpose of the vehicle is the sale and/or production of food. Number eight, mobile food vendor includes any individual, person, firm or corporation who operates mobile food vending push, push carts and/or mobile food vehicles. Number nine, mobile food vendor permit shall mean a permit which has been issued pursuant to the requirements of this ordinance. Number ten, special event shall mean any event so designated by the board of public works and safety of the city of TELCITY, Indiana. Section four, one seventeen oh three, permit required. It shall be unlawful for a mobile food vendor to engage in their respective businesses within the corporate limits of the city of TELCITY, Indiana without obtaining a mobile food vendor permit in, in compliance with the provisions of this chapter. The obtaining of a permit by an employer or principal shall in no way relieve any employee or agent of that employer or principal of their legal obligation to obtain a permit if their activity falls within the jurisdiction of this ordinance. Number two, a mobile food vendor shall obtain a separate permit for each mobile food vehicle and/or food vending push cart they wish to operate. All permits issued under the authority of this chapter shall not be transferable. Number three, if any permit holder desires to continue in business after the expiration of a permit, a new permit must be obtained as required under this chapter.
Need me to help you?
I got it.
Okay.
Number four, each mobile food vendor must obtain all necessary and required licenses prior to applying for the city permit and must comply with all regulations established by the Perry County Health Department and/or other regulatory bodies. Number five, nothing contained in this chapter shall relieve a mobile food vendor from obtaining other required licenses and/or permits from other regulatory bodies. Section five, one seventeen, that should say, section four. One seventeen point oh four, application.
No, it's five.
Is it, am I right?
You're correct. You're good. Don't say.
It's section five, you're right. One seventeen point oh four, applicants for any mobile food vendor permit under this chapter must file a written sworn application signed by the applicant with the clerk treasurer showing at minimum the following information. The name, full address, telephone number and email, if applicable, of the mobile food vending business, business owner and business operator. The intended locations of operation of the mobile food vendor. The duration of the permit being sought. The intended hours of operation of the mobile food vendor. The name, telephone number and email address of the private property owner, if applicable, and the full address of the private property on, property on which the mobile food vendor intends to operate, if applicable, as well as a letter of approval from said private property owner, if operating on private property. A complete menu of the food being sold. Proof of Perry County health permit. Proof of insurance, if operating on property owned and maintained by the city in compliance with the city minimum insurance requirements. Letter of approval, if operating on property owned by the city of TELCITY, including city streets or maintained by the city of TELCITY Parks and Recreation Department. Said approval must be obtained from the board of public works and safety or the parks board. Dated mobile food vendor signature verifying that they shall abide by the provisions of this chapter. Section six, one seventeen point oh five, investigation of applicant. Upon receipt by the clerk treasurer of any application for a permit under the provisions of this chapter, the TELCITY Police Department may investigate a mobile food vendor's criminal history and moral character as it deems necessary for the protection of the public good and welfare. Number two, if, if as a result of the investigation, the applicant's moral character and business responsibility are found to be such as to endanger or be detrimental to the public and its good and welfare, the permit shall be denied or if issued revoked by the TELCITY Police Department. Section seven, one seventeen oh six, permit fees. Number one, each applicant shall pay a permit fee as follows. Forty dollars for a one month permit, one hundred and eighty dollars for a six month permit, two hundred and forty dollars for a one year permit. Number two, a permit becomes active for a consecutive period of time on the day that the permit is approved. Number three, in the event the permit is revoked, the city shall retain all funds. Number four, no permit shall be issued until the permit, permit fee has been paid. Section eight, one seventeen oh seven, insurance and indemnity. Applicants operating on property owned and maintained by the city shall provide a certificate of liability upon arrival of the permit, approval of the permit, which shall ensure the applicant and name the city of TELCITY, Indiana as an additional insured against the following liabilities and in the following amounts relative to such activity. General liability, one million dollars, automotive liability, one million dollars, and proof of workers' compensation. Number two, mobile food vendors who are operating a food vending push cart are exempt from providing proof of automotive liability insurance. Mobile food vendors who are self-employed and have no additional employees are exempt from providing proof of workers' compensation insurance. Section nine, one seventeen oh eight, location restrictions. Mobile food vendors shall be permitted to operate pursuant to the approved permission by the board of public works and safety or parks board or in accordance with section one seventeen oh four E. Number two, mobile food vendors may make special requests to the board to operate on other locations owned and maintained by the city of TELCITY, Indiana. Number three, the city shall have the authority to designate other locations of permitted operation for special events. Number four, with written consent of the property owners, vendors may operate on private property that is in a business or industrial zone. Number five, when a vendor seeks to operate in a right of way, the vendor shall not impede the use of a city, street, alleyway or sidewalk. Number six, no mobile food vendor shall operate within one hundred feet of a special event unless granted approval by the coordinator of the special event or the board. Number seven, no mobile food vendor shall locate themselves in an area that significantly impedes or prevents the use of any city of TELCITY, Indiana property or which would endanger the safety and/or property of the public. Number eight, noble, no mobile food vendor shall locate themselves in residentially zoned areas. Section ten, one seventeen oh nine, prohibited hours. Mobile food vendors are prohibited from operating or parking on any property owned and maintained by the city of TELCITY, Indiana between the hours of one o'clock AM and six o'clock AM. Number two, mobile food vendors may make special requests to the board to operate during prohibited hours. Section eleven, one seventeen ten, standard of conduct. Mobile food vendors shall conduct themselves at all times in orderly and lawful manner. Mobile food vendors are prohibited from using a device or machine to produce unreasonable amounts of sound or light, such as, but not limited to, bull horns, strobe lights and neon signs. Mobile food vendors are required to obey the commands of the law enforcement and code enforcement officials. No mobile food vendor shall provide tables, seating or any other dining arrangement. No mobile food vendor shall sell or otherwise provide alcoholic beverages. Mobile food vendors must provide waste receptacles that are sufficient in size for both customer and employee waste. Mobile food vendors are responsible for the disposal of waste that is generated by the use of their waste receptacles and shall not dispose of their waste in waste receptacles owned and maintained by the city. Mobile food vendors are prohibited from disposing of any food, liquid or other waste materials in sanitary, sanitary and/or storm sewers. Mobile food vendors. Mobile food vendors shall not utilize any city or private electrical outlets while in operation, all electrical needs must be self-generated. Mobile food vendors operating electrical equipment are required to use heavy-duty extension cords. Mobile food vendors may operate a generator that produces no more than 75 decibels. Mobile food vendors must be parked a minimum of 10 feet away from nearby buildings or other food vending pushcarts and/or mobile food vehicles. Mobile food vehicles operating deep-frying appliances must be parked a minimum of 20 feet away from nearby buildings or other food vending pushcarts and/or mobile food vehicles. Mobile food vendors must be parked a minimum of 100 feet from the entrance of a restaurant or from an outdoor dining area. Mobile food vendors must be parked a minimum of 15 feet from a fire hydrant. Mobile food vendors are prohibited from smoking within 8 feet of their mobile food vehicle or food vending pushcart. No food vending pushcart or mobile food vehicle shall operate with a drive-through. Mobile food vendors must display all permits at all times while in operation. Food vending pushcarts and mobile food vehicles may be inspected by code enforcement officers of the city when deemed necessary. Section 12, Safety Requirements. All mobile food vehicles must have a 2A-10BC rated fire extinguisher. Mobile food vehicles operating deep fryer appliances must have a Class K rated fire extinguisher. Each fire extinguisher provided by a mobile food vendor shall have a label or tag securely attached that indicates the last time it was serviced. The label or tag must state the month of the service took place, and the individual, firm, or corporation responsible for servicing it. All fire extinguishers must have been serviced and validated within the last 12 months. Mobile food vehicles must have all fire extinguishers mounted at a minimum of 3 feet in height and a maximum of 5 feet in height. Section 13, 117.12, Suspension Revocation Penalties. Permits issued under the provision of this chapter may be revoked by appropriately designated city officials after notice and hearing for any of the following causes. Fraud, misrepresentation, or false statements contained in the application for the permit. Fraud, misrepresentation, or false statements made in the course of the business for which the permit is issued. Any violation of the provisions of this chapter, conducting the business for which the permit is issued in an unlawful manner, or in such a manner as to constitute the breach of the peace, or to constitute a menace to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Notice of hearing for revocation of a permit shall be given in writing, setting forth specifically the grounds of the complaint, and the time and place of the hearing. The notice shall be mailed, postage prepaid, to the permit holder at their last known address, at least five days prior to the date set for the hearing. Penalties. Any individual, firm, or corporation convicted of a violation of any provision of this chapter shall be fined in a sum not less than the applicable amount set forth below. First offense, $25, second offense, $100, third offense, $300, fourth offense, $600. Each day any violation of this chapter continues shall be considered a separate offense. The city of Tel City, Indiana, shall also have the right to recover the costs of administering this offense, including but not limited to filing fees and attorney fees. If the violation includes a failure to obtain a permit under this section, said penalty shall also include a permit fee equal to the appropriate amount established under 11706.1. Enforcement. Appropriate city officials shall enforce this ordinance. Upon determination by said officials that there exists an emergency, and that for the protection of the public welfare, any permit should be immediately suspended, the appropriate officials may forthwith suspend the permit pending hearing as provided for in this ordinance. Administrative Liability. No officer, agent, or employee of the city of Tel City, Indiana, shall render themselves personally liable for any damage that may occur to persons or property as a result of any act required or permitted in the discharge of their duties under this chapter. Any suit brought against any officer, agent, or employee of the city of Tel City, Indiana, as a result of any act required or permitted in the discharge of their duties under this chapter, shall be defended by the city attorney until the final determination of the proceedings therein. Section 14, Right to Appeal. Any individual, firm, or corporation aggrieved by a decision in regard to the denial or revocation of a permit, as provided for herein, shall have the right to appeal to the board. Appeal shall be taken by filing with the board within 14 days after notice of the decision has been mailed to the last known address of the individual, firm, or corporation, a written statement setting forth the grounds for the appeal. The board shall set the time and place for a hearing on the appeal, and notice of the hearing shall be given to the individual, firm, or corporation in the manner provided for notice of hearing on revocation. The order of the board on the appeal shall be final. Section 15, Exemptions. Ice cream trucks, caterers, food delivery drivers, and other food service vehicles that do not park or locate in any one place for longer than 10 minutes are exempt from the jurisdiction of this chapter. Lemonade stands, bake sales, and other stands operated by children for the purpose of selling homemade foods are exempt from the jurisdiction of this chapter. Indiana not-for-profit fraternal organizations, Indiana not-for-profit organizations that are tax-exempt under the Internal Revenue Code, Section 501(c)(3), Indiana not-for-profit veterans organizations, and persons 17 and under selling merchandise, services, or seeking donations on behalf of a school, church, sports, or charitable or scouting organization are exempt from the jurisdiction of this chapter. Section 16, Prior Ordinances. All ordinances and/or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Section 17, Separability. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance shall for any reason be held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions hereafter. Section 18, Effective Date. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the common counsel, its approval by the mayor, and completion of any other legal requirements, all in the manner provided by law. Passed and adopted by the common counsel of the city of Tel City, Indiana, this 15th day of May, 2023.
Okay, council, you've had the complete first reading for this number 1202 in entirety. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for second, third reading by title only?
Yes.
Motion made by Gary, is there a second? Second by Julie. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Second, third reading by title only.
I'm gonna take my time on this. Ordinance number 1202, An Ordinance Permitting and Regulating Mobile Food Vendors in the City of Tel City, Indiana. Third reading, ordinance number 1202, An Ordinance Permitting and Regulating Mobile Food Vendors in the City of Tel City, Indiana.
Okay, council, you've had the first, second, third reading of ordinance number 1202. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Gary, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Before we vote, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good. Thank you all.
If I have to read another ordinance that long, I'm gonna record myself in advance reading it slowly, and then I'm gonna play it for everybody on fast-forward at the meeting.
Could you just put it in the machine where it could read for you? You might legally have to have it read with your artificial intelligence, so. All right, moving on to item C, Additional Appropriations. We've got resolutions here, I believe, right?
Yes.
I'm gonna let Connie drive these buses just a little while. Jeff, rest.
I feel like I gave birth to a mobile food vendor.
There you go.
The first one that I have are the one, it was the ARP for Corona virus, Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. At your last meeting, you did have these, and several of them, you did make a motion of intent to approve them at tonight's meeting. And so, I'm gonna read through this, and then if you so choose, you could change your vote on the tap-in fees and capacity fees, because that died for a lack of a second on the motion at the last meeting.